Hi, my name is Joe Layden. I'm the Town Manager here in Upton, and I'm joined by David Laper, who is our Town Moderator. And David's going to talk about Town Meeting and maybe what some of the residents who attend can expect.
Okay, thank you, Joe, very much. Hello. Like Joe said, my name is David Laper, and I'm the Town Moderator for the Town of Upton. For those of you who do not know what the Moderator does, he or she is the person that runs the Town Meeting. So what is the Town Meeting? It's the legislative branch of the governing body for towns like Upton in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Think back to your U.S. History or Civics class that you took in high school. Remember the three branches of government? The executive, the legislative, and the judicial. On a national level, the executive is the president. Congress or the House and the Senate is the legislative, and the Supreme Court is the judicial. That's what they taught us. But how about at the local or town level? Well, for towns like Upton, the Select Board is the executive, the Town Meeting is the legislative, and the Attorney General is the judicial. Believe it or not, the Town of Upton cannot spend any money unless the legislative branch, in other words, the Town Meeting, approves that spending. So how does this process work? Every spring, each town in Massachusetts has an annual Town Meeting. For Upton, it's the first Thursday in May. They meet to do the following. One, to see and approve the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Two, to purchase any items that may be necessary for departments to perform their jobs for the upcoming year and beyond. Three, to make any changes to various bylaws within the community. And four, to decide any other business that may legally come before the legislative body. So the Select Board, again, the executive branch, puts together the warrant. The warrant is a list of items that the Town Meeting will discuss and potentially vote on. In addition to the budget stated earlier, one of those items on the warrant could be, let's say, something as simple as the purchase of a computer for the Town Clerk's office. Or as complex as the purchase of a parcel of land to be used for some particular purpose for the Town of Upton. The warrant for the annual Town Meeting is typically 30 to 40 items. Once the Select Board completes the warrant, they must post it seven days prior to the meeting in three different locations in the community. In addition, the warrant is also posted on the Town of Upton's website. In doing so, it gives you, the voters in the Town of Upton, the opportunity to review them and see what you will be voting on at the Town Meeting. In addition to the annual Town Meeting in May, the town typically has a special Town Meeting in the fall. This is necessary because there are nearly always times and situations which occur during the year that cannot wait until the next annual Town Meeting to be addressed. This is true for almost every single community in the Commonwealth. One question that you may be wondering is the following. If it's the Select Board that puts together the warrant, then why aren't they running the Town Meeting? Good question. Here's the answer: checks and balances. This phrase means different things to different people. But to me, with regard to the Town Meeting, it means the following. Our founding leaders from many years ago were wise enough to know that if it's the Town's meeting and not the Select Board's meeting, then an independent person, i.e. the Moderator, who's not involved with the Board at all, should run that meeting. This is why the Moderator is in an elected position and should never be appointed by the Select Board. I'll finish up my comments about the Town Meeting and how it works. The most critical thing that I want to say is this. The only way that the Town Meeting form of government, as it's called, works is for you, the citizens of the Town of Upton, to be involved with that process. If not enough people attend the Town Meeting, then a very small percentage of the citizens will be deciding how your tax dollars are being spent. It is your job to be informed. It is your job to ask questions. And it is your job to attend, listen to, and then vote on what you want for the community of Upton. There is nothing more satisfying, in my opinion, with regard to involvement in the political process for the community than to attend a Town Meeting, listen to what my neighbors have to say, and, maybe even say something myself, and then take the vote. And know that you had something to do with the ultimate result and what that would be. Maybe the vote went your way, or maybe it didn't. But you were involved with that process. The vast majority of people who live on our planet do not have that opportunity, and they never will. Please don't take this opportunity for granted. Be informed, be involved, attend the Town Meeting. Looking forward to seeing you all on the first Thursday in May. Thank you very much. Good day.
Thank you, David, and hope to see you, as well as other Upton residents, on May 2 at Nimmack High School in the auditorium promptly at 7 o'clock.
That's right.
On May 2, we're going to be holding annual Town Meeting, and we have 34 articles on the warrant ranging from approval of the FY '25 operating budget to capital articles to zoning articles. I'm going to provide an overview of the articles on the warrant and encourage everyone to visit the Town's website for more information. So first up, we have an article accepting reports from Town Officers and Appointment Committees. This is a sort of administrative task where we accept the reports that are published in the 2023 Annual Town Report. Article 2 is an article that seeks Town Meeting's authorization to pay for prior bills. Currently, we have five bills totaling $1,078.42 for bills that were due prior to the start of the fiscal '24 year, so prior to July 1. Article 3 is the article that establishes the FY '25 operating budget. The FY '25 budget runs from July 1 of this year, 2024, through June 3 of 2025. The proposed budget is a total of $28,748,939, representing a 2.9% increase over the approved FY '24 budget. Article 4, as well as Article 5, are enterprise articles. The first dealing with setting the Water Department Enterprise Fund for fiscal year '25. This is basically paying for wages, expenses, and other projects within the Water Department. Article 5 similarly does the same thing for the Wastewater Department. Sets wages, expenses of the department, as well as other projects. In Article 6, this is a standard article that sets dollar amounts for revolving funds. So for a department that may collect some revenue, it goes into a revolving fund to be used for specific purposes. This year, besides setting amounts, we're also adding a new revolving fund entitled Upton Community Center Revolving Fund. This is because we are starting to have a lot of interest in renting the community center, and this way we can make sure that any proceeds that come in can be reinvested and offset the cost of operating the community center. Article 7 deals with our cable operations. We receive a portion of funds from everyone's cable bill to allow for us to put Town Meetings on our YouTube channel as well as on our cable channel. And this covers the cost of part-time cable employee, capital expenses, and other operational expenses to support the transmission of government meetings and events. Article 8 seeks $160,000 to go into the Town Stabilization Account. This is basically a rainy day fund so that if we had unforeseen circumstances come up, a drop in revenue, cut in state monies to the town, we have funds that we can supplement to make sure that we soften any sort of financial impact. The next article seeks $300,000 to go into a Town Capital Stabilization Account. What this allows for us to do is cover the costs of some capital items and put some money away so that if we have larger projects, we can offset some of the costs or cover for their costs without having to impact taxpayers or consider any sort of debt exclusion vote. With the new community center, we have some other projects on the horizon, so this is basically putting some money aside so that we can prepare for conducting those projects sometime in the future. Article 10 is also a standard article. This is dealing with an appropriation for OPEB. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. So when someone retires, there's certain obligations the Town continues to have to pay, such as for medical insurance. This makes sure that we have money set aside to meet our future obligations. Article 11 is an article we see every year. This is basically accepting the Chapter 90 road funds. Basically, from the state, we receive money that helps in the cost of repairing and rebuilding some of our roads, doing projects. And this article approves the acceptance of those funds and gives authorization to also borrow for any expenses in case we don't receive the funds until a later date in that fiscal year. Associated with this is we have a separate article for funding roadway improvements. For this Town Meeting, we are seeking Town Meeting's approval for $600,000. This is going to be a combination of $500,000 from free cash as well as $100,000 from the general fund to supplement our Chapter 90 funds for maintaining our town roads, doing paving projects, and other roadway improvement projects. The next article is an article very often we may be needed in the past, but for this current fiscal year, we fortunately don't need it at this point. Article 19 is basically what we've referred to as Snow and Ice Deficit Article, where we identify additional funds coming from free cash in case we exceeded our budgeted amount for snow removal operations. Currently, in FY '24, we have not exhausted what we budgeted as part of last year's budget, so we anticipate that we may be just passing over this article. The next article is an article to supplement the Town's Conservation Fund, basically looking for $5,000 to go to the Conservation Commission for additional conservation activities. The next article and the series of articles after this are our Community Preservation Committee articles. This first one, Article 15A, distributes the funds we receive not only through a fee that is on each property within town, but also when there's transactions of real estate within town. For this current fiscal year, we're looking at $102,080 to go into each of the Open Space Historic Preservation and Affordable Housing Reserve buckets. The remainder will go into the Undesignated Fund. The total that we're anticipating as far as this year's CPC allocation is $102,200,000. Article B is an article that seeks to transfer $25,000 from estimated revenues for the purpose of administrative and operating costs associated with the Community Preservation Committee. This covers the cost of staff, but then also legal adds any expertise that we may need in supporting the operations of the Community Preservation Committee. Article 15C is, this is the 11th payment towards the bond for Town Hall renovations. This year, the amount of $266,841 represents the 11th payment, and we have nine years left on this bond that involves the renovation of the Upton Town Hall. Article 16 is a community preservation article that is seeking funds from the CPC Fund to cover the cost for acquiring land that is adjacent to Lake Wildwood. The various committees within town are working with the property owners to secure this land. It abuts the Grafton-Upton Railroad, abuts recreation land, open space in Grafton, and a tiny portion of this land is also in the Town of Grafton. We are working together with Grafton and the property owners to preserve this piece of property that has direct frontage on Lake Wildwood and is seeking authorization from Town Meeting for acquiring this property. The next article is seeking community preservation revenues, funds in the amount of $12,500 to cover the cost associated with the acquisition of about 15 acres of land off of Mechanic Street. The purchase of the property is being done through local land trust, and we're basically covering some of the administrative and legal costs associated with that. The next article, and for those trying to read on the screen, I'd encourage you to read the Town Meeting warrant because the article itself is rather lengthy, but the purposes is rather straightforward. Blackstone Valley Tech had submitted to the 13 towns that represent the district a request to be placed on the various towns' warrants the authorization to borrow $10 million for the purpose of paying for roof reconstruction and replacement of the rooftop HVAC systems. This has been something that BBT has identified as a significant capital need. And the reason why the article itself is so lengthy is because there's two important provisions that go along with this. In seeking Town's input for this project, many of the towns in the district had identified that they wanted the BBT to apply for MSBA, a Massachusetts School Building Authority, funding, which can pay up to anywhere from 40% to 50% of the project, as well as looking at how that's funded on a local level. So what this article does is basically say that in approving the borrowing of $10 million, that BBT will apply to the MSBA for grant funding for covering some of the cost of this. And for the Town of Upton, we have language that also says that this would be approved as a debt exclusion. Separately, I'll be preparing a FAQ, a fact point, as far as what this really means, because there is an article on the annual ballot seeking approval for this bond as a debt exclusion, meaning that it is outside the Town's levy. Currently, because we don't know a lot of details, we're proposing this article be handled this way. And once we get more information, we're always able to amend our vote, have a special Town Meeting in November. So the next set of articles are dealing with many of our capital articles. I'm going to encourage you to visit the Town's website. We're going to prepare a separate video link where you can watch presentation from our DPW Director, our Police Chief, as well as Fire Chief, and by members of our Land Stewardship Committee on these articles, as well as the two land acquisition articles. So you can get a little bit more information on these and the importance of some of these articles. The department heads had prepared a presentation for a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and that's the link that we can provide on the Town's website and encourage you to review. So Article 19 proposes that we utilize $500,000 for reconstruction of FISCAV. We recently completed the water main reconstruction. This was money that was used through ARPA, and we have existing Town Chapter 90 funds that we're going to use. And we identified for this project, we need about $500,000 of additional funds to complete the reconstruction of FISCAV, which includes not only pavement, but also new sidewalks, new drainage for FISCAV. Article 20 seeks $150,000 for the replacement of a one-ton dump truck with plow and sander for the highway division. Article 21 seeks $150,000 for the purchase of a truck for water and wastewater, proposing $75,000 to be used from water retained earnings and $75,000 from wastewater retained earnings. Article 22 seeks $65,000 for the purchase of a replacement patrol cruiser. The Town has a schedule of, in one year, two vehicles, and then in subsequent year, one vehicle. Last year was the single year, so this year we're looking for two. One article is, one vehicle is already funded through the Police Department's operating budget. This is a second that we're proposing to be paid with free cash. The next article seeks approval from Town Meeting for $100,000 for the refurbishment of Engine 1. This is a very important piece of equipment for the Town, and it's a way for the Town to extend the life of Engine 1 from seven to 10 years. Since new fire engines can cost in excess of $1 million, this is a very economical way to make sure we extend the useful life of our fire engine. Article 24 seeks approval for using $41,000 to replace two of the three emergency message boards in Town. These are things that notify the public in case of emergencies, if there's droughts, water bans going into effect, as well as other important events to notify in case of road closures or construction. So we're looking for funding for two of these, and a third will be looking for funding through Water Department at this Fall Special Town Meeting. Article 25 seeks approval for $45,000 to replenish the beach sand at Kiwanis Beach. The last time this was done, it was in excess of 10 years ago, and this will not only replenish the beach, make sure that there's additional sand, because over time, beach sand does go into Pratt Pond at Kiwanis Beach, but also to make sure that we're providing the best experience for our beach customers. Article 26 is a recurring article looking for $10,000 for the Board of Assessors for Recertification Work. Article 27 seeks $25,000 to allow for the Town to engage engineer and consultant to assist the Select Board of Value, feasibility, and bearing utilities within Upton Center. This is an article that the Board is bringing forward with the tip project that will result in reconstruction of 140 and the reconstruction of the intersection out here outside of Town Hall. We're evaluating whether or not it's feasible to bury utilities within the Upton Center area. Article 28 seeks Town Meeting's approval to authorize the Select Board to set and adjust the fee charge for written demands issued by the Collector's Office. This is to allow for the treasure collector to raise or change the demand fees through a vote of the Select Board compared to an article at Town Meeting on an annual basis. Article 29 seeks Town Meeting's approval of bylaw improvements to the Town's municipal stormwater sewer system, sorry, seeks approval for amendments to our construction stormwater bylaw. This is something that's administered through the Conservation Commission, and it is intended to comply with requirements of the Town's municipal stormwater system permit. And Article 30 has been in front of Town Meeting before, as Azalea Lane had been before the Town a couple of years ago. However, there are various things that happened that the acceptance could not be recorded as registered deeds. And we are again looking for Town Meeting approval now that we have Easement secured and the Select Board recently held a layout hearing approving the acceptance of that layout for Azalea, and we are seeking Town Meeting's approval for acceptance of that subdivision route. Hello, I'm now joined by Michael Antonellis, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services, who is going to provide an overview of the zoning articles that were proposed by the Planning Board. Mike?
Thanks, Joe. So the first article they have on for this Town Meeting is an article that is for what is referred to as inclusionary zoning. The title of the article is "Inclusion of Affordable Housing." For folks who may not know what inclusionary zoning is, it's basically a tool, it's a local regulatory tool that towns can use to require affordable units to be put in as a part of any proposed new housing developments. So starting at a unit threshold of six market rate units, what would be implemented is that there would be a requirement to provide at least one affordable housing unit within that proposed development. And so that's exactly what this article does, is it starts at a threshold of, or a trigger at six units. For any development, six to nine units, one affordable housing unit would be required. 10 to 19 units, two affordable units. 20 to 29 market rate units, three affordable units. And then, once it gets beyond 30 units, the minimum requirement is 12.5% of the total units, between 30 and 44 market rate units. And then anything beyond 45 market rate units would have a requirement of 15% of the total development to be dedicated as affordable housing. That affordable housing requirement is controlled through the state's requirements for what is defined as affordable housing. That ties into what folks may be familiar with is the MGL 40B requirement, which is the requirement that all cities and towns within the Commonwealth have to have 10% of their total housing stock dedicated as affordable. And so that's what this provision seeks to implement, is through the creation of any new market rate units in Town, that the Town also receive a certain percentage of affordable housing units to keep in line with that requirement going forward and so that Town doesn't fall, so Town doesn't fall behind in widening the gap of total market rate units as the Town continues to build new homes, new units, new developments.
And also, this was a recommendation of the recently completed Affordable Housing Plan that identified various strategies for providing housing options and affordable housing within Upton.
That's exactly right. There was a lot of conversation through the Steering Committee on that board, as well as its recommendations. as its recommendation by the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a proponent of this article as well.
Okay, great.
Next is the solar, proposed solar overlay district, and the Planning Board has had a lot of discussion over this particular matter, folks remember, over the last year. The proposed area for the solar overlay district is located on South Street over what is commonly referred to as the sand pits. It's a tract of land that's over 80 acres. It's set back from the road. A lot of it is within US Army Corps of Engineers flowage easements. And so the Board, through a lot of discussion, is recommending this location for a solar overlay district, with the understanding that the state requires towns to implement zoning that allows for a certain amount of its land is dedicated, or is allowed for commercial use solar farms. And so they looked at this parcel land, and they were satisfied with it as they think it will fit in with the town generally. Currently, the commercial and industrial districts along either side of Route 140, both the west and east side of town, is zoned for the CNI District, Commercial and Industrial, and that is what currently is the only area in town where solar farms are allowed, either by site plan or by special permit. Because this will be located, this overlay district will be located within the agricultural residential district and surrounded by the agricultural residential district, the Planning Board felt it was important to include a provision that lowers the threshold for requiring a special permit. So while in these commercial and industrial district, a special permit is only triggered when you have 80,000 square feet of proposed site panels, essentially, and you could, a developer might be able to get a site plan for 40,000 square feet or over. What the Planning Board has implemented is that, and within this new overlay district, that beginning at 40,000 square feet of panels, it is required to have a special permit, not just a site plan, although there would be the requirement for both. And the Planning Board felt that that was an important provision to keep in order to control for potential impacts that could be felt by surrounding landowners and homeowners.
Thank you.
And the next one is amendments to the Upton Center Business District, and there is within Section 300-3.1, the Table of Principal Uses, there's a note underneath that table, Note Number Nine, that states, "In addition to the following retail business establishments, in addition, the following retail business establishments are allowed within the UCBD District by special permit: liquor store, music store, artist/live/work spaces, art galleries, and other similar retail businesses." What this article proposes to is move the categories music store, art galleries, and other similar retail businesses into what is considered to be an as-of-right use instead of specially permitted use. This article is sponsored, recommended by the Planning Board, but also the Economic Development Committee was a strong proponent of this as well. Nobody felt as though any new music store that wants to be located within the Center Business District should have to undergo a special permitting process, and should be able to just outfit existing spaces if they exist, or create new spaces, which would be governed under building permit processes as well, anyway. So everyone from the Economic Development Committee and Planning Board felt this was a worthwhile article.
Okay, thanks. And the last article, 34, is really almost in response to the special town meetings petition article for 5G personal wireless, and the proponent then worked with the Planning Board in drafting a new proposal that's going to be considered before town meeting.
That's right. The Planning Board heard the concerns of citizens regarding this issue and wanted to pursue it and allow for some provision to be changed within the zoning bylaw, so that's exactly what this article provides for. I was fortunate enough to work with Lori Woden and David Brooks, who are both interested citizens in bringing this article to the Planning Board. So they worked with the Planning Board through this Planning Board-sponsored article, but with both of their relative interests and expertise on this matter. And so the article is the result of that collaboration between the Planning Board and Lori, and David, and myself. It's a, this is an existing bylaw within the zoning bylaw. It's the bylaw that controls for personal wireless, which is typically, you know, towers that have antennas on them and transmit for communications. And so with that article typically controlling for those larger types of uses, obviously a major height impact and site impact and surround, to impact possibly to the surrounding properties because of those things. What this article seeks to do is a couple of things. First, it changes some of the nomenclature within the article so that all of the definitions that are being used are consistent, both locally and federally. The FCC has its own definitions of what personal wireless is versus what towns might define them as, and so this article just seeks to marry the two and to make sure that there's consistency across all references, so there's no confusion on the local level what is being applied for. So there's no changes that are proposed for those towers and things like that, but what is being accounted for is the inclusion of a fairly brand-new use. Folks might be aware of the term 5G, which is a reference to fifth generation of communications that's being promulgated. And so 5G is typically controlled through, or provided for, within these small cell antennas, which if you go to cities, Boston, in and around, they're typically mounted to telephone poles or street lights, or things that are typically within a right-of-way, 15 to 20 feet in the air, and they act to transmit cellphone data, essentially, to allow folks to use those services. So what this article is doing is identifying that as a use and providing for the ability of the town to control for that use. In this article, it calls out small cell specifically, notes it as an accessory use, and requires that any new small cell facility obtains a special permit from the Planning Board in order to use. So that's really the biggest thing with this article. A lot of the details are found within subsection G of the article, so if folks are interested, they should read that and go through that thoroughly for what is being proposed. So again, two main things. It creates for identifying the use within the town, and by identifying that use, it can require getting a special permit by the Planning Board for the use. And then the very next thing, or last thing of note, is that it allows for and requires that the Planning Board and Select Board create rules and regulations governing the use of small cell facilities in town. And what that will do is not only control for the use on private property, which is what zoning seeks to control, but also within right-of-ways that are under the Select Board's control.
Thank you very much. And for each of these four articles, the Planning Board held a public hearing and ultimately voted to support and recommend approval of these articles.
That's right. Each of these articles received a recommendation from the Planning Board by a majority vote.
Okay, and these recommendations are published on the town's website, so I encourage people to take a look, get a little bit more background information. You can see the text not only in the Town Meeting warrant, but also in the Planning Board's report. Thank you very much, Michael.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much for watching. For more information, I encourage you to visit the town of Upton's website at www.uptonma.gov. And also, I hope to see you there on May 2 at Knickmont High School. Town meeting starts promptly at 7:00 PM. Thank you.